All right, well, welcome to our second meeting of the month. This is where we usually do not have our routine business, but have special presentations and discussions. And first point on the agenda is the questions or comments from the floor. Are there any?
No.
Okay, so then we proceed to the first point on the agenda, which is a presentation on social emotional learning from our elementary school. Take it away.
Mrs. Nair.
Oh, well, she was here.
But I'm waiting. If you want me to talk, she asked me.
Yes, we'd like to first introduce Mrs. Leverett, who's here with Mrs. Sullivan, and Mrs. Nair whenever we find her. And we...
Mrs. Sullivan is slowly leaving you.
She's right here.
And we know Mrs. Leverett is going first, Mrs. Leverett. I did know that.
Oh.
You're the lead, yes. Oh!
Oh, thank you so much.
Rule number one is social emotional learning.
I sat down and I realized that I haven't brought the beverage.
It's okay. Rule number one is social emotional learning. Pass it. Yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Nair, for helping.
Hi, everybody. So, hi, I'm Michelle Nair. I am the school family facilitator. Am I seeing this stuff for this thing? Is that okay? School family facilitator for East Hill School, and we're here tonight to do a presentation on the work that we've been doing at our school. And within the packets that I have, if you open them up and just you can take a look at them, just so you have an idea of what I included. On the right-hand side, we have our East Hill School Family Procedure Book that the staff has worked on. Underneath that is the Canada-Johary Middle School Procedure Book that we worked on to create over the summer. These booklets are for the adults in the building. They're not for the children. It's to help with the, for the adults. On the right-hand side is my presentation. We also have, although I brought two fabulous colleagues with me tonight, if I could have brought everybody, I would. So instead, what I did is I asked them to, if they would anonymously put down their thoughts on the changes that they have seen in our school family since the implementation of social emotional learning with conscious discipline, so in the past three years. And so you can see all of their comments. There's, I believe, over 40 of them, so if you could take an opportunity sometime this week to take a look at it, that would be great.
Where are those?
These are, it's the second one. Teacher thoughts on our implementation of social emotional learning. There's titles. And then included is year three, social emotional implementation, just the work that we're doing so far, so you kind of see an overview from the summer, September and October. I have last year's and my first year's binders are about this thick, so I didn't think you'd want me to photocopy them, but anytime anyone would like to take a look at them, you're more than welcome. And then the last one that I have for you is the parent connections that we've made since starting with conscious discipline. But right now, I'm going to turn it over to Doris, who's going to speak a little bit, and then to Cullen, and then I'll circle back.
Thank you for letting me talk with you. This is, my talk tonight is two hurraes and an oops. And these are things that happened within the last two weeks of school. I have really appreciated the training that I've been given in conscious discipline. I wish, this is my 38th year of teaching, I wish I'd had it in my first year of teaching. I wish I'd had it in college, because it is wonderful. It is exactly what I needed to make myself into a better teacher. It didn't matter how many years of experience I'd had. So when I walk into the school in the morning at 7:30-ish, the fourth graders are all gathered in the library, and that's now my room. So I have about 60 fourth graders playing games, reading, sometimes fooling around and running around. But a couple of Thursdays ago, it was particularly loud, really loud, and I went over to my desk to get ready for my middle school class, which comes right up at 8 o'clock, and I heard a lot of "Stop it, stop, stop, they'll do it!" You know? So I quick stood at the door at 10 of 8, and I said, "When someone is doing something you don't like, think about what you want." This is right out of conscious discipline. Think about what you want, and tell that person what you want. So instead of saying, "Stop it!", say, "Move back so I have room. Leave the game on the table. Borrow someone else's crayon." Whatever all those issues were that I was hearing that morning for the 20 minutes I was there. So remember, think about what you want and ask for it. All right, have a good day, and out they go. And here are two boys straggling out of the room, and as they walked by me, they looked at me and said, "We thought about it, and we want a chocolate fountain." Now, I went up the hall, and I find Michelle standing in the hall, so I stopped, forgive me, Chris, and I tell her this story, because it just made me laugh, it was so wonderful, which put me one minute behind getting to the middle school. And as I walk into the middle school library, the students are already there, because even though my schedule says the class starts at 8 o'clock, it's actually 7:57, and I'm on time, I'm a right-at-the-moment person, so I walk in and the kids are already in the room, and there's fighting going on, and I hear a gaggle of students. I have 17 children in that class. I hear, "Blah, blah, blah, they're in their survival state." And even though they were, I was so happy that these students could describe in those terms what was going on. I said, "You mean there was kicking and hitting?" "Yes, they're in their survival state." So what do we need to do? "Breathe." All right, let's breathe. And about the time we're breathing and getting calm, the two boys who were fighting and who continue to fight, this is not, this did not get resolved that morning, but here was the victory. Student A, boy number one, whatever, says, "Well, he made me mad, because he said blah, blah, blah." And I went, "Oh, I understand. You've given all your power to boy B. Now he's in control of you, and he can make you mad whenever you want. No, that's not what I said, but you just told me he made you mad. And you've now given your power to him. And if you can make him mad, he's given his power to you, and now you can each make each other mad whenever you want. How handy for them. Now I can make you mad if I want to?" Because, of course, I'm trying to get them to think about the choices that they have, and a lot of children, and myself included, really have never thought about the power of getting mad and making it as a choice. So the children in my sixth grade have these commitment journals. This is entirely, entirely because of conscious discipline. They hate them. I'll be honest. So for the class, they come in, and early in the class, we talked about the brain states. We colored it, we found words to describe it. I have a little coloring page that said, "Don't put the keys to your happiness in somebody else's pocket." And I have a list of the executive states, and then I ask them to choose, choose one item from either collaborative conversation or executive state to be your goal to work on for this class, make a commitment to getting better at it. And like I said, I don't pretend that they love it, they don't, but they fill it out, and they choose from, you know, paying attention, time management, organization, all of the executive state functions of the brain. And then I also have my exit tickets on here, so it's easy to go, you know, it's time to clean up for the day, go ahead and fill out your exit ticket. And that particular day, the exit ticket was, "Just tell me something about today's class that was new, or something you learned that you didn't already know." And I had taught them how using the Dewey Decimal System would help them locate books on shelves. That's what I thought they would be writing about. I'm going to read an exact quote from that day. So one student wrote, and this is a quote, "I did not know when I walked into class that you gave them power and stuff." And I understood what he meant. And he did not realize that in letting someone else make you mad, you're giving the power to them. So that was one of my other hurraes. And those two students continue to fight each other. I don't begin to pretend that that solved the problem. They continue to have those issues, but that day, we had class. Everyone in that room had class. I wasn't running anyone over to the office, I wasn't following up with discipline. They calmed, and we had class, and that was a victory for me. All right, and then I also pay the price when I don't use conscious discipline skills. So this happened a few days later. A fifth grader was in the library. The directions were given. The fifth grader chose not to listen and pay attention, and was confused in what was going on. And instead of me making better choices and saying, I jumped right to giving her consequence. "All right, well, we're playing this game, and you didn't follow the directions, so you just sit over there on that chair, and when the second round comes around, you can participate." And what I got instead of teaching that child that day was, I had a child sitting in a chair crying, and when it was time to go play the game, she looked at me and said, "I don't want to play your stupid game, and I lost." And I lost, because I did not follow conscious discipline routines that would have been a better choice for me, because I'm going on 38 years of experience, and that's what I used to do a lot. And I try not to anymore, but it's really, really hard to change habits. So I'm very grateful.
What would have been a conscious discipline approach to that girl?
All right, I would have given her choices. I could have let her play and be confused, because that's a natural consequence. Well, you know, this game, you have to know where this thing is, what the kids were doing for, I was trying to teach computer coding, and they had hidden a toy, and they had to give each other computer-like directions on how to find a toy, and she didn't know where the toy was hidden, because she wasn't paying attention. So when her turn came up, she would not have been able to be an active participant in that. She couldn't have successfully given directions on how to find that toy, because she had no idea where it got hidden. And she could have just had that kind of lost moment of not knowing, and then the next person would have taken their turn, and it would have gone on. I could have waited and talked to her privately after, when she was upset. I think in retrospect, I could probably think of 20 things I could have done better, but it's really easy to just do what I've done a lot in my life, and that doesn't always mean it's been the right thing to do. So again, I really appreciate the training, and I can't read that book over enough, because every time I reread it, I find more, every training we have, I find more. And I understand people, and I understand the world differently, and you're able to see people who are in their survival state and understand that's why. And when a child is melting down, when my granddaughter, who's two, is melting down, can't problem solve, you wait, you help them get out of it. And those are things I swore I'd already know, but I approach it now with a little clearer understanding. So thank you for supporting it. I think it is a great idea, it's a great program, and I think your challenge right now is getting everyone who comes in who didn't have all that heavy-duty six or seven days of training, getting them up to speed is going to be the challenge, keeping the new people up. So, is that enough? Thank you.
I'm Connie Sullivan. I'm just going to piggyback on what Doris said, is that I agree. I also wish that I had had the training sooner, because I think I could have used it in my parenting, as well as the 26 years of teaching I've had. Mrs. Nair came to me yesterday. I'm kind of a fill-in for somebody that was going to be here, so I had kind of not too long to think about this, which was probably good for me, because I had to think about, how can I take the 800 wonderful things I could say about conscious discipline and try to narrow it down to a brief few moments, and think about the most profound things I could share, I guess. And so I tried to quickly take a few pictures of things that I do in the day-to-day quick routines. I think Michelle asked me to share with you, because I have a different viewpoint than a lot of people. One, because for the last couple of years, I've been in grade five classroom co-teaching. I also have seen this implemented in a K-5 environment in Summer Stars, where you're mixing 25 to 40 students at multiple grade levels, many of which have a variety of struggles that we're trying to work within in multiple different ways, with four teachers, lots of grade levels, and so there's that. And I'm going to speak to that, because two years ago, it was probably my, it wasn't even probably, it was definitely my most profound moment with conscious discipline, and also one of my most difficult, heart-wrenching moments teaching, if not dealing with children at all in my life. And then also, this year, I'm K-5 AIS, so I'm teaching littles and dealing with this in a whole different way, and it's really neat to see how they bring it into their day-to-day life, and how they absolutely light up with the different routines and things that we bring in. So I have a whole different perspective, not to mention the CDAT team, being part of that, and so being part of little skits, being part of the school family assemblies, planning them, acting them out, which isn't necessarily my favorite thing, but I do like being the Happy Birthday bracelet lady, so I like that. That's fun. So probably universally, that's one of the biggest things I see, is the unity in the school family, being part of Canada-Johary East Hill for so long. When you see pre-K3 through 5th grade, all in the gym, being one school unit. When you see kindergarteners standing up in front of these big kids to them, teaching them how to use their big voice. Or second graders standing up in front of them and teaching their peers a new strategy of breathing. Or the entire elementary school family celebrating in song. You can't help but have chills, or smiles, or be dancing and singing along with them with this school family feeling that truly I'd never had before, until that first school family assembly. And it was, it was really a shifting, altering moment when I, and it was pretty fantastic. So that was, that was, that was one of those wow moments in conscious discipline for me. And along with that is the shared language. When I have K to 5, and I can say, "Is that safe?", or I can say, "Is that helpful or hurtful?", or I can use oops, that we all have oops, either the grown-ups that we have oops, or the kids that have oops. And yes, we have an oops, where we can turn it around and learn from that. Whether they're five or whether they're 11, they all know that language. That is school unity, that is school family, that is the same language whether I'm using it, or Mrs. Nair is using it, or Mrs. Leverett in the library is using it. That is something very consistent and threaded through that works. And it's either positive language, or it's where we are helping them learn from their mistakes language, and it's unity, and it's powerful. Along with that, so what I did was, like I said, I took a few pictures. I don't think they're in the order, I was going to, but I kind of jotted things down, but they do just, I kind of like clicked through just a couple of things in my classroom. So what you see here is our commitments. Many of our classrooms have our commitments. Our commitments, mine is a little bit different. What you see here is, because I have K-5, I kind of tried to make it universal. So everybody has their "I'm willing" sticks, they're color-coded, if you know me, it's just my name, it makes me happy. But our commitments, it's, we use our watching eyes, and our listening ears, and our quiet, safe feet, and our kind words, and our quiet, safe hands, and all of those things help our learning brains grow. And it's not just, that all goes with the conscious discipline idea of building rapport, thinking about, mindfully think about others, because it's not just about ourselves, it's creating that environment for others to learn in as well. And they create, they, if they are willing, then they put in their sticks. Now, one of the things that I found very useful was, I think, two years ago, it was one of my students, and there's, he's a struggling seventh grader right now, but if they aren't willing, how telling that is. If they leave that stick out, now, of course, sometimes they just forget, but sometimes if they leave it out, and you go to them, and you ask them quietly, or pull them aside, "Honey, I noticed, I noticed you didn't put your stick in today. Can you, can you talk to me about that? Why, why did you leave your stick out? Why are you willing to do that today?" The answers, the feedback, the reflection you get from that, they don't have to speak to you, they don't have to come to you. You get so much information from them, just having that quiet voice of being able to leave their stick out. "I have something to say to you. Something happened. I need the opportunity to talk to you about why I am not in a good place to start yet, just from leaving a stick out. I'm not in a good place to learn yet." And it gives them the opportunity to have a voice. That's the safe environment we're giving the children by something as simple as having them make a commitment. And it also has them understand it's not just about them. It's simple. All right, what else do we have there, Mrs. Nair? The kindness pledge. We just got these. Mrs. Fowler, they're beautiful, but this, this is something, the kindness, I had the kindness on the wall in a world of where you can choose anything, choose kindness. I think that I, something went on my, there's a picture on my bulletin board where it's choose kind, yeah, right there. I think, in my, in my opinion, just the teach piece, I think probably more for my intermediate, but the kindness pledge is for everybody, universal. It just, again, creates a safe environment for them to know it's a place to take risks, it's a place to take chances, and it all comes back to, when we get to the safe place, helping them regulate their emotions, talk about their emotions, understand their emotions, all of that kind of stuff. What else do we have there, Mrs. Nair? All right, this is my greetings. I brought my greetings with me. So again, it's building rapport, building that safe classroom. We have greeters. Many of us have different ways to do this. Believe it or not, the older kids love it too. But, and it's so simple, they love the jellyfish. Who wouldn't love that? But it builds rapport. It makes them part of your family. The fifth graders love the jellyfish. You'd be surprised how many boys, you know, come in and get a little hug. So, you know, it's just, it's just that school family environment, because it's that connections, conscious discipline, one of the three main things is connections govern their behavior. Connections govern their behavior, and if they feel safe, and they feel connected, that's going to drive the behavior and their choices. And so if they feel a part of a safe environment, that they are a part of, they're going to be more willing to stop, take a breath, and react differently. It works. That's my guys this morning. I think that was my guys making their commitments, some of my second graders. In the background, you see my kindness tree. They, kindness matters here. You see that there's random acts of kindness. We have kindness catchers. Amazing what the kids will find each other doing. They love to notice, "I noticed somebody did this, I noticed somebody did that." Again, it's part of our safe environment, and I think there's a wish well picture.
It's from the beginning.
It's at the beginning. Oh, that's the safe place, and there's my wish well. Okay, again, most of us have them. We wish you well. I'll show you some of that other stuff, but again, one of the moments, well, today, we've had two different students in the hospital this past week, but my, one of my kindergartners was out today, and so kindergartners do it a little different. They, and of course, they're like, "We want to do it our way." So they were doing it their way, but when you see one of the little ones going, "I'm going to send S. 15, 15 wish wells out the window. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven." I mean, it's just, it's amazing. But then again, when you picture 40 students and Summer Stars, kindergartners through 5th grade, sitting in a circle, silent, with their hands on their hearts. The mindfulness and the discipline that they learned in sending wishful, positive thoughts beyond themselves to others, it's such an advanced thought for a five-year-old. And for 10-year-olds, who usually don't think past, in my past experiences, "I want this video game," or "I want, you know, my snack right now," to be spending that mindful moment to send positive wishes, it's really, you know, pretty, pretty amazing to see, in that quiet moment every day. And they can't wait to do it. It's them who remind us. And so then you'll see there too, we have the butterfly, because you have to give butterfly kisses when they've been gone. It's, you have to do that. You were gone. Where would you like your butterfly kiss? I'm so glad you're next to me, Chris. But all of those things, of course, are building the rapport, building the community, and you help each other. So I think there was a picture of the safe place, we all have the safe place, and that's a piece of it. And I don't think, I think we, it gives them that place to regulate, and then, of course, the opportunity to get themselves calm and come back, okay? But what I found, even more than my safe place, is opportunities, my experience, my learning, in how, what I do before and after. Especially a background, I mean, we, I have, my whole, my whole career has been about managing behavior, replacing behavior, identifying behaviors, all of those things. But the word "trigger" is a word in my vocabulary that is consistent and constant every day now. Identifying triggers, figuring out how to navigate triggers, focusing on what we want. What behaviors do we want? Noticing how I can identify what triggers, knowing it's happening in front of me and not to me, and helping them understand. For me, one of the biggest things has been trying to understand, what's the backstory? What's the story that's creating that behavior? It's, what's the positive intent? It's not that that child doesn't want to do it, something's holding them back from being able to do it. What can I do for you to help you get started? I noticed this, what can I do? Using the words, "Are you willing to this, to do this in this way?", instead of saying, "Do that, do that, do that." It's in the language, it's in understanding that, for the most part, a child wants to participate. In the, in the most part, a child wants to get your attention in a positive way. They want to be engaged. So what is the trigger that's keeping them from doing that, and how can we help them manage that? Using that conflict or that challenge as an opportunity to teach them. I never realized so much, how much I assumed. I assumed they just knew how to walk in that line, come into my classroom, do my greeting, put in my stick, and go to the chair, the seats. Of course, they know how to do that. No, they don't. Not until you practice it. When they're knocking each other in and doing this, well, they're excited to put the stick in. They're excited to be the first to the table. They're not, their intention is not to be naughty. If they're doing that, you have to back it up and practice, one at a time. Show me how to do this. How, show me what it could look like, show me what it should look like, let's practice that. That is all part of conscious discipline. The positive intention is there. That's all part of it. The assumptions I made, if I could go back and do it again, I would be better. Using my composure as a model, how many times a day now, I just stop, and I take my breath, and they... How many times a day now, I just stop and I take my breath and they notice. Instead of reacting. And they notice. Um, and those things, then if they do trigger, of course, they're going to trigger. I work with kids that are going to trigger. I work with kids that have gone through trauma. They're going to trigger. Then we have the safe place. We're offering them strategies. We're teaching them how to handle it. What do we do after? We reflect. We never helped children reflect on that. We never helped children sit down and talk to them about, "It's okay." We made it oops. We all make it oops. "This is what it looked like. What are we going to do next time?" That's one of the biggest things for me. First grader. Here they are. These are our commitments. She's a handful. She wears me out. But she, I mean, she's pulling on me, pulling on me, pulling on me, pulling on me, pulling on me. I tried to move her away. She's, I mean, she's adorable. I'd put her right on my lap and take her home in my pocket if I could, but that's not my job. So, as I'm telling her, and then she, then she wouldn't work. Then she was refusing. So then we needed to do this. So she knew. I wasn't using my listening ears. I didn't use my safe hands and quiet hands. And that does not help my learning brain grow. So we talked about that, but even more importantly, what do we do next time? What do we do next time? Well, next time, I can remind my brain to use my safe, quiet hands and that will help my listening ears and my learning brain will grow. So, never did we do that with first graders. And that's how they're learning. It's amazing what we're doing with these little guys. So, I could go on and on. I won't. I won't go on and on. I told you, oh my goodness, eight hundred things. I will not keep going, um, because you guys ha- I get to leave, you guys have to stay. But, um, I noticed, you guys are getting tired of me talking. So, and she was supposed to give me the "shh" and she hasn't yet. Okay, so, one quick little thing. Kids notice. My little first grader had a little guy all over the place. He was rolling, he was spinning, he was, uh... One little girl said, "You know, Patty, your brain's in control." So they do notice. And my most profound moment, and I'll keep it very short, my most profound moment, two summers ago, I had four very, very, very difficult, sad, traumatic children. Three of them were raging all at the same ti- time because they triggered each other. We called Mrs. Ward and Mrs. Ward was in the meeting. She could not help us. We don't have counselors during the summer. I was on my own. They were kicking everywhere and they, they, they tipped some furniture, they were punching some things. There was some words that I may or may not have learned. Um, and, um, it was, it was sad, it was hard, it was difficult. It was hard to see. My heart was breaking, but you know what? I could handle it. I was able to stay calm. I was able to know, you know what? They're raging. All three of them were raging. They were triggering each other. But I knew. What do we need to do? We need to walk. We need to move. When they're raging, they're not ready to sit. They're not ready to breathe. We need to move first. So we walked. We walked a lot. We walked a really long way, but, um, we walked in the building to keep it safe, but we walked. And then we tossed some balls around in, in a safe place. Um, and then they started to settle down. And then we were able to breathe. And then we were able to start calming. And then we were able to start identifying our emotions. And then we were able to start settling, to settle even more. And it was a long time. This was not minutes. This was about an hour and a half or two hours. But through that, we were finally able to not go back where the other kids were because it wasn't safe yet. But we were able to identify what they thought they could do. And they thought that they could look up, I don't know, volcanoes or something on the computer. And so by the time Stacy was able to come, they were all, three of them were in three different places, all on the computers. I think two might have been working on one computer and one on another computer, looking up things of their choice. And if I had not had conscious discipline strategies, I don't think I would have been able to handle that situation and get those boys settled down. And that is when I knew we're onto something. This works. I need this. We need this. This is something our whole school needs to implement because it works. So, thank you for bringing it to us. And we, again, I agree with Mrs. Leverett. You need to keep it. You need to keep, keep going for these guys. So thank you. Thank you. So here's two fun facts about me. One, I noticed today that my shoes are mucking up the floor, so I'm going to sit because for some reason they're causing marks, but I also noticed that if I rub it, it comes off, so I apologize to the custodian. The second fun fact about me that you probably don't know is I hate the name Conscious Discipline. And the reason I hate the name and I've never liked it is because I didn't understand it. Because it's not a discipline program at all. It's all about social emotional awareness. And so when I had the opportunity to talk to the, to the founder of Conscious Discipline, Becky Bailey, I went to her and I said, "Can you just explain something to me?" And she said, I said, "Why the name Conscious Discipline? It, it makes no sense to me. This is not a discipline program." And she said, "Michelle, the reason it's called Conscious Discipline is because the goal is for the adult to consciously discipline themselves, to first be aware of what state they are in so they can consciously stay or get to their executive state so then they can model the, the expected behavior for the child." And then I was kinda like, "Oh, okay, I get it." But I still hate the name. Um, I have a lot of people come up to me and say, um, you know, "There's no consequences with conscious discipline and where's the punishment?" And so I found this great article and, um, if you would just, just a quick little read. I wanted to share with you because it does such a great job, much better than I can explain the reason why I firmly believe with all my heart why Conscious Discipline is so important at the elementary level. Um, it said, "Parents are often unclear about the difference between a consequence and a punishment. A consequence is the result or direct e- uh, effect of an action. The goal for giving consequences is to teach a lesson that leads to positive choices. It encourages self-examination, accepting responsibility for one's actions, the ability to learn from mistakes, and the development of an inner voice of self-control. Consequences give your child the message that he or she is capable of taking responsibility for problems and can handle them and therefore move on. The definition of punishment, however, is to cau- is to cause to suffer. The goal of a punishment is to inflict hurt, pain, and get even. Punishment causes resentment and rarely, rarely teaches a child what you want him or her to learn. It is characterized by criticism, sarcasm, disapproval, and domination. Punishment teaches that force, intimidation, and revenge are okay. It also teaches a child not to think for themselves. This listen to a voice outside yourself mentality can lead to a susceptibility to um, negative peer groups such as cults and gangs." So I thought that was an, a really good way to explain why we choose to use consequences, whether they're natural or imposed at the elementary level when a child is, um, acting out. And so a great example is if you were going to the airport and you had to catch a flight and you were forty-five minutes late for your flight, uh, the ticket lady is gonna come out and say to you, "I'm sorry, you missed your flight." That's a natural consequence of the choice you made of, of showing up late to the airport. The ticket girl is not going to then say, "Oh, and by the way, you're also not gonna be able to watch TV for forty-five minutes in the lounge while you wait for the next flight." It's, so that's a natural consequence. So we try to explain to children, because it's a lifelong skill, that there are natural consequences for your behavior. And so, um, I can talk, and people who know me know that about me, that I can talk and talk and talk. And I wanted to be respectful of your time. And so I made a little sheet, uh, more cheat sheet for myself, but please feel free to take it out if not, or you can just listen. I'm not gonna read it word for word, but I do wanna keep, um, 'cause I can get off fast. Um, but there is a growing appreciation in our school family at East Hill for how the social, emotional, and physical well-being of students is so incredibly integral to academic achievement. Research has shown now that, uh, a student's social, emotional well-being is a better predictor of high school graduation than their IQ. Which, that makes perfect sense, or even any standardized test score. Because if you think about it, a child could be incredibly bright, but if they're struggling to maintain their composure, which allows them to stay in their executive state of their brain, which is the only place that you can learn and process, if they can't be there, then there's no learning that can take place. So it really doesn't matter how bright they are if they can't self-regulate. So that is, has really become our mission at East Hill, is to help the children with their self-regulation skills. Um, and this awareness that, at, at East Hill, it's really taken a whole child approach to student education. We provide a safe and supportive school-family environment. Um, and until more recently, SEL, which is social emotional learning, it's been directed primarily to young students and elementary. Um, but what we have seen through three significant movements contributes to this importance. One, adolescent brain science continues to evolve. Two, the ACES study and the impact that those factors are having on students. And then three, a growing understanding about, um, SEL competencies and how they affect ac- uh, impact academic learning. So because of these three movements, SEL is not only being explored more, it's being required by New York State. As you all know, July first, they mandated social emotional learning standards in, in, for schools in New York State. And I am so incredibly proud and honored to be in a district that was three years ahead of that implementation from the work that we are doing. Um, and so in an effort to work more intentionally to support emotional intelligence and social capabilities of all students pre-K through twelve, um, a social emotional learning task force is being formed here at Canada-Johary with representation from all three buildings. Now, we understand that conscious discipline works at the elementary level. And that's great for the elementary. Um, but that's just one piece. You have to look at it as social emotional learning is what drives all that we do and conscious discipline is how we get to meet those standards in our building. And we are excited to look at, um, how other, what other puzzle pieces can fit in grades seven through twelve. And so that's an ex- very exciting prospect to think that across the board. And there's so many things already going on in the district. Middle School 2.0, the STAR program, and we just had a phenomenal activity where every child came together with the teachers through the STAR program last Friday in our school. And they had this wonderful, wonderful presentation that ties in so beautifully about how kindness matters and, you know, being kind. And it was just phenomenal to see seventeen-year-olds working with five-year-olds and doing projects that were age-appropriate and really getting across that message. I, I certainly hope that is not the first and last activity that we do and I hope that we have more. So what I wanted to do is show you a very quick video, it's less than three minutes long, um, about why social emotional learning is so critical and why we need to continue doing the good work that we're doing. I'm gonna go over.
It's okay, it's going. Just have to give me-
Oh, yep.
Yes, you just have to give me a second because you know, we're talking about me and my-
Less than three, two minutes and fifty-four seconds.
Alright, let's make sure the volume sound is up. Um, hold on. We're having just a small difficulty with the volume. Is the volume up on, uh, projector, please, could you check? Sorry, thanks everyone for this small commercial break. While we make sure the volume is up. We can explain, the network is slow. It's because we're-
I could easily surprise you. And I've watched it numerous times.
I know. I can put it, I can host it.
I mean, we could, I don't know, I'm not a text person, but could we just go to YouTube and then put in the information and then it would've come up quicker?
It is, it is coming up.
Oh, okay.
That's where it is. This is not cooperating. I think it's because it's buffering on the back side.
Boy, we could, bless you. We could take questions.
Yes, but when you, when you click to buffer, if that- Can you turn it back, turn the lights back on and let me see if I can get it to load up?
I have a question.
Yes.
How often, um, do students have to go into a safe place? I don't mean one particular student. I mean, how often, like, do you see students having, utilizing the safe spaces?
I would say daily. I mean, I'm not in every classroom all day long, but I can, but I know that the teachers, um, are using the safe spaces. They're there for the children. So, I, I do know one class, um, was a little hesitant because it was the little, little ones and they thought, "Oh, they're gonna just look at it like it's a fun thing." And I said, "You know what? They will for about five minutes and then it's gonna wear off and then they're gonna be able to see how you use it." Because you actually teach it like you would teach using a computer center or a reading center. And so the kids that need it, it's there for them. So it's just like anything else. Some days they need it, some days they don't. And it's more about having that space available for when the child does need it. They can go to that. A lot of them have the friends and family book in there. So for some of our children in our school family, um, their parents are incarcerated or they, they live with their grandparents. And so in all of the classrooms, we have friends and family boards. They're usually located near the safe space where they have pictures of their family members. So they can actually like make a picture, draw it, um, put it up there. And someone might say, "Well, you know, Michelle, that takes away from the academic learning." You know what I'd say to that? I would rather have a child need to go to the safe space for five or ten minutes, get themselves self-regulated and then be able to go back and continue learning instead of being so emotionally distraught that they're not hearing anything. So, great question. I can't tell you like a specific number.
No, no, I was just curious. When I was teaching fourth grade, the kids knew that they could come and go out of it as needed, but it was, it wasn't something I wrote down for data, but it was data. I would notice that, you know, I'd start math class and little Suzie Q was in the safe space for ten minutes because math was a trigger. Or, or they'd come in from recess and someone would storm over to the safe space and sit there and they'd get out their paper and they'd write or they'd draw or whatever. I, I didn't have a, like a five-minute timer that I expected them to be nervous.
That being said though, like if there is someone that is tending to use it as an avoidance, which can happen. Absolutely. Um, then you can implement the timer. Or then you can implement the, like, um, where, you know, they have, like, there's procedures for it. You know, like, "I'm feeling this way, so this is what I'm choosing to use." So if they're choosing like the journal, there would be like a journal in there. You could see where they like might doodle or they, they might write about why, why, why they're angry or something or why they're frustrated. And then my goal is, and one of the goals actually is to, to avoid my work. And then you would say, so if they choose to avoid the work, then you might set the timer. That I'm gonna ask that you please, you know, try to, um, rejoin us in, um, three minutes and if you're willing, um, I'll, I'll help you or something. So that's certainly, you know, something that may, you know, happen.
So, so as a follow-up to that, how does that work then? Um, for the teacher, you know, say Doris is teaching fourth grade and, you know, Suzie Q needs to be in the side, in there and Johnny also needs to be in the safe space and you need to teach your lesson and you've got twenty kids in the room. So how do you balance that?
Sometimes I just tell them that they need to make their own safe space in some other spot. I ignored the kids in the safe space. I didn't draw any attention to them. I didn't spotlight them. Because I just taught, but it, but here's the thing, they're still in the room.
Right.
And, and when they're upset and you send them out to do something else, now they're out of the room. There's no hope of learning anything.
And the point is to teach them to self-regulate so that they can return.
Some teachers have portable safe spaces because you're only allowed, there's like a couple golden rules with the safe spaces. One is one child, just for safety purposes, is only allowed at a time. So some, we've made, I've made up, um, portable safe space buckets where they'll have the, the, the felt board, which in actual, like, you can move the things. They might have some, um, cranky cream. It might have a journal. It might have a stress ball. It might have a coloring sheet. Just any, any type of thing that they can choose then to use to help them get back to that spot.
Chris, you're, I, I am cranky cream, aren't I? You can help yourself.
Cranky cream is fabulous. Any other questions? Yes? Yes?
I mean, I've spoken to a number of teachers in the elementary school. It seems to be universal satisfaction in what it's accomplished in terms of dealing with some of the behavioral issues that were running rampant in the elementary school. I mean, what are the things that you still see as problems? And what are the, going forward, are there any new horizons that you're looking to?
I think time is always one of our biggest problems. And we see that there are so many children coming to us now with such diverse needs. I think that might be one of them. I wish that we had more time to do maybe more school family assemblies and things of that nature to, to kind of deal with an array of needs. We seem to have, I don't know, I, I mean, maybe it's that Pollyanna approach, but I don't see a lot of problems where at this point, we've done so much work and that, I think maybe just keeping it up to date, I think what Doris said about the new staff coming in. Because two, three years ago, we had a ton of training. And now I've been to so many additional trainings that I feel like I can do the trainings myself with the new staff. So time for that, work over the summer, managing and trying to just deal with schedules with people. Like our C-DAT team, we've made a huge commitment, we've grown from eight members in the elementary to 16 now. And so managing our schedules and everyone trying to be able to come together to, to do the meetings. One of the things though, that we have changed much to some of our C-DAT members' joy is the students are now in fifth grade going to be taking over the school family assembly skits under the direction of me. And so they will be putting on the performances at each family assembly rather than the teachers. Because they, they weren't big fans, but they were great about it, but they weren't big fans though. And we thought it was great to give the children more, you know, more responsibility. I'm not sure, Stacy, would you wanna comment about maybe problems?
I have a, I guess, for me, I think, like, the time to practice, the time to, like, for that reflection for the first grader, that was during my lunch. The, if the opportunity, the playground clearly is always a huge problem area. And so if you really wanna catch some of those conflicts and use them as teaching opportunities, you have to give up a planned lunch time to go catch those opportunities to teach. So that, I would think the time to catch the learning opportunities, which are often your free time. So I would think that, I think those learning opportunities are often when the kids are not under your watch. That's probably for me. Or the time for reflection, like I think what Mrs. Field was saying, like, those times are taking, like, you're also, they're learning academic times. And so that, they're simultaneous. And so for me, that's one of my, the balancing of the social-emotional skill, it is a skill. It's a skill that needs to be practiced. But it has to be practiced at the same time, you're also expected to be teaching the academic piece. And for me, that's my hardest balance. So that's, uh, uh, not, that's probably for me my hardest time. So, do I stop and take this time to teach this skill right now? Why these guys need to continue working on the reading? Or do I let this go? When does that happen? And.
Issues during recess kind of fall under my domain. And so there's multiple kids obviously outside. So I would say maybe one of the struggles I might have is sometimes I feel pulled in different directions because I might be working with a one child or a small group trying to solve a conflict. And then there's another issue. But I do think one way we're approaching that is now, we are, I'm gonna be providing training for all support personnel in the elementary. So that includes the cafeteria staff, the lunch aids, the kindergarten aids, the school nurse office, we're hoping eventually the custodians. And then eventually I'd like to branch out to the bus drivers. Because the bus drivers are an integral part, I mean, they are the very first person in our school family that sees them and also the last. And, and bus is an issue, there are a lot of things on the bus that happen. And so thank goodness for cameras, but we wanna be able to empower them as well. So I think those are kind of like those, but we seem to be needing them. But again, it's always, it's just time for me. Yes?
I have three questions.
Okay.
The first is, how are we dealing with substitutes?
Okay.
So that they're properly educated.
Okay, so let me ask, can I answer one question at a time? Okay, so last year, I put into place helpful hints for guest teachers. We call them guest teachers first off instead of substitutes because it gives the impression to students that these are teachers, they're of equal caliber to our staff and they should be treated as such. And so we have helpful hint guidelines, actually really big on procedures. So we have a little procedure booklet, it's actually a one-page, kind of like cheat sheet for them that shows them, explains about the safe space, the procedures, what to do, kind of like if-then statements. And it's in every teacher, home, uh, teacher's, like, his self-plan.
Yeah.
So that's how I do that.
Second question is, do we have a plan for bringing new teachers up to speed?
Yes, so this summer, we hired a new teacher, but it was towards the end of the summer. And so that presented a little bit of a difficulty for me because we had other meetings and things going on. And so what I've been doing is two things, you just have one new staff member this year. But I have been, I did half-day instruction with her where I did it one-on-one, worked with her independently. And then also I push into her classroom so I can model the skills for her. Last year, our new teacher, I happened to be her mentor. So I believed to work directly with her all year long to get her up to speed. And she was actually one of our teachers that volunteered to go to the Weeklong Institute. So that's how we handle that.
And my third teacher, my third question is to learn more about the social-emotional learning.
Well, if I could show you the video. Oh, the task force. Okay, well, Jen is my co-chair. Since she is the administrator amongst the pair, I'll, I'll let her chat a little bit about it.
So can we first get a feel of who's involved in it?
Sure. Put it out to the teachers, anyone who cared to join, we have not shown anyone a way. So, but we have a great smattering of people from all, all three buildings. That's including Officer Cruzi, some people from our PPS team, myself, the Zerina Miller, outlier people that would, everyone, everyone has.
No, we have, it's great because at the elementary, we have a classroom teacher representative and a special area teacher. So Sharon Tauss and Kevin Scuttle are our representatives at the elementary along with myself. At the middle school, I believe we have four teachers that volunteered. And at the high school, I believe we have Odina Lenz and then three classroom teachers. So we have a nice, or, and we're always looking for, you know, more members. But as we first put it out to, to the staff, we just kind of said, this is kind of what we were thinking. And we wanted people, we didn't wanna force anyone, so it was more of a willingness. And we did have more people at the elementary, but unfortunately, again, it was a time thing. It conflicted with coaching or parental things. But yeah, I was thrilled, I think we have 14 members, which is exciting to start.
What we, so our first order of business is to kind of get the vibe, like, we know where we are at East Hill but we wanna see where the teachers are at, at each of the buildings. Okay, where are we seeing our goals, we wanna get like a baseline. Because our number one goal for this task force is how do we create unity across the districts? So we have some of these little guys that have been using conscious discipline. So what does that look like when we go into the middle school? We wanna make it a process that it might not be conscious discipline, but what, what are those things that we're carrying over so that it's seamless to them, that the learning is continuing? So we're really gonna dive into the social-emotional learning standards that the state came out. We talked about it earlier this school year under the guise of how our health teachers are going to be teaching that. But it's more than that. It also has to do with how are we interacting at the building level? How does the school feel, what is the culture? So we're gonna be really diving into that type of stuff first. But our first goal, let's get our baseline, let's, let's make sure that everyone has a solid understanding of the standards. And then we'll start, you know, looking at action steps to kind of bring it all together.
One last question.
Yes.
How many classes at the elementary level have co-teachers? Like you, Colleen mentioned that she would co-taught for the last couple of years, do we still have that happening?
Yes, oh yes.
Second, third, fourth. So, so is there like one class at each level that's co-teaching?
No.
Or there are.
It's second grade, third grade, and fourth grade, just where we have to.
Okay, that's what I mean, so there's like one classroom that has a, has a co-teacher at each of those levels?
Yes.
That's what, that's what I mean. So I would imagine that those are the classrooms where it's most useful to have a second person is what I mean if you, for the safe space? I don't know.
No. Every class, every class has a safe space. So you think about a safe space as a place in the room where a child could go. It's never, we, we, you know, we don't like to be in the front room. So it's, it's a place where a child can go. And it's across every classroom, it's in every special area, even in the gym, there's a spot. If a child is struggling with something, they just go. And there's five steps. And it's kind of like, you transfer from I am, I am angry, to I feel angry, which doesn't seem like a big deal, but it is. No, you're Jen, you're not, you're not angry, you know, you're feeling angry, Jen. And how do you feel that emotion and then handle it in a safe way, get composed? And so then there's options, because you always wanna give children choices. So they can choose which procedure they, they want to do to enable them to get back to that place. Now, there are times, absolutely, when children are really struggling. And then that's when I'll be called to help with those kids. And sometimes they just need a break. So we have break passes where then the kids, you know, they tried it, it just didn't work. And so, okay, why don't you come with me and then we have a conversation, we go for a walk, we talk about it. So I can provide that one-on-one that they need. So then the teacher can keep teaching, the children can keep learning. But more importantly, that little, that little kiddo can get themselves in a place where then they can go back and continue the learning. So there are safe spaces everywhere throughout the school. And it's about utilizing them to help the child, if that makes more sense.
It does, thank you for explaining.
Sure.
One, one little question I have is, what are you doing in terms of educating the parents?
So that's a great question, because I would say, if you, you know, self-reflection is always such a wonderful thing, isn't it? And I would say that that's probably my, I would say, it's probably my biggest weakness. I don't know if you wanna call it that, but maybe an area to improve on.
Opportunity.
An opportunity to, to, to advance my skills. I have a sheet in the binder that I gave you that shows all of the things that we did. But one of the big things that we're hoping to do this year, and it's going to be a huge undertaking, but, you know, why not? And so what we're gonna do is hopefully in the spring after state exams, we want the children to put on a student-centered information night for their parents and actually set up all the structures. Have the safe space, have the wish wall, have the forebathing techniques, have the I love you rituals and the morning greeters. And then have the children actually be at the stations and the parents can rotate through so they can learn more about it. But through the videos that we've done and the robo-calls, the weekly robo-calls, explaining to the parents what the skills are. I had a quarterly newsletter in the Penny Saver that we took out in addition to the weekly robo-calls that we still do. On top of that are the, the videos. I had a parent book club from one of the conscious discipline books, Easy to Love, Difficult to Discipline, Seven Great Ways to Help Build Your Relationship with Your Child. And we had a, a book club, though again, self-reflection. It was interesting because the parents that were there, they, they, they seemed to already, it appears that they already had the skills. And so it, it became more of a dialogue with them, but, which was great. So we've done the book club. And we've had tables set up at back-to-school night, information nights for parents when they come for back-to-school. And then honestly, it's kind of like just working with the teachers and working with the children. It's really been like one-on-one conversations with parents, one parent at a time. So we've had two information nights, one was in before school, I think at seven in the morning you came to that one. And then one was at seven o'clock at night last spring for parents to come. So, but again, I think that would be my area, I've been told that could be a focus area that I could do more with. And that's great, I mean, you know, because I want this program, I don't look at it as a program, I look at it more as a philosophy, it's just how to get that information out there.
Because I mean, I think, as you know, I mean, the misconception out there is that the students are not having any discipline.
Yeah, I know, that's why I hate the name.
Any consequences.
Right. And then I just invite the parents, and it's great. And it's, and honestly, I can say the parents that have maybe challenged me the most when I bring them in and have the one-on-one conversations, like you and I have had Scott and you and I have had Mark, then they see it. So it's really about trying to, sometimes I think the smaller, more intimate times to sit and kneel and really be thoughtful and, and have that connection, it shows parents what we're doing. But.
Anything else? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay. Do you wanna see the video? We don't have to, but it, it does give a really kind of good, like I said, it's less than three minutes.
There's a lot of talk these days about SEL, social-emotional learning. But what exactly is it? Social-emotional learning is the process of learning social and emotional skills. And it's just as important as learning reading or math. This learning process is most effective when it begins early and continues through high school. Social-emotional skills are essential for success in school, work, and life. With SEL, students learn to manage their own emotions and behaviors, have empathy and show care and concern for others, solve problems effectively, make responsible decisions, and maintain healthy relationships. Students learn to recognize what's happening inside them and to be aware of their emotions, which helps them deal with strong emotions and impulsive behaviors. It helps them stop, take a breath, and think about a situation before acting. Students learn to identify others' emotions and perspectives, which helps them empathize and show compassion, no matter who they are or what their background is. It's not difficult to imagine how this is important in the classroom and in life. Students learn to solve problems in peaceful ways and communicate assertively about what they need or want. This helps them get along with other students and get the help they need from adults. When students learn to make responsible decisions about their lives and their future, things can turn out better. Research shows social-emotional learning makes a difference. Students who participate in SEL do better academically, have improved attitudes and behaviors, and act in delinquent or disruptive ways less often. In the United States, students with strong social-emotional competence are twice as likely to earn a college degree and nearly 50% more likely to graduate from high school and have a full-time job by age 25. Just as important, students who are socially and emotionally competent have more friends. This means they're more likely to feel connected to school and do well, and less likely to be left out or bullied. Simply put, by participating in social-emotional learning, students learn the skills to succeed in every facet of school and the rest of their lives.
Those are great jobs. So I just wanted to say one last, thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us tonight. And I would like to extend an invitation to any of you at any time if you would like to come and see the wonderful work that my colleagues are doing. We would love to have you. We have school family assemblies every month. We have one coming up in November, I believe, the November 16th, and it's going to be at 9:30 in the morning. And we would love to have any of you come to see it. So, thank you.
Hi, Mrs. Neer.
Yes.
I do like social-emotional learning overall. I think that's the appropriate thing to go across the district.
Yes.
I really like that we've targeted it in a way that makes sense for the whole district.
Yes, I think so too. So cheers. Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do we have any trackable data that can say, this is what it was? Or referrals and that sort of thing? To see if there's an improvement in the number of kind of severe behaviors and that sort of thing? Is there any way to actually prove what we think we're doing by having numbers that back us up?
We can track the discipline referrals, however, we also are starting to use the system more robustly. What Michelle is doing now with some of the PPS numbers, actually looking at those students who caused the most disruption, the crisis, and to see what those numbers. who cause the most disruption, the crisis, and to see what those numbers are year to year. And how many of those, of that number, what does the repetition look like or what does the success rate look like? So that's what we're most eager to track now because those are the children where something happens and there's twenty children who aren't learning.
Yeah.
Um, and so that number we want to see.
Right.
A way to. So that's what we're focusing on now. But any ideas on other data that you'd like to track? I just wondered, um, Michelle and Kevin, part of his dissertation work is actually student self-reporting and surveys of their own, um, social emotional growth. So they're going to roll out some type of student self-assessment pre and post, which I think you'll be really excited to. That's just in the beginning phases.
And just because I'm here and you're listening, I, I really also like how you structured the remedial needs because frustrated academically, children are going to respond differently. So in addition to giving a social emotional, you've also structured supports so well this year. I just am so impressed by, I, I get to see every child K through six. And, and I, I just have seen from where I'm, my perspective, I've seen those class, I work with every single class. If there's not a class that I work with and I go, oh, dear heavens, you know, I, I, the, the groups are really functioning really well this year. I'm really pleased.
Yeah.
What I can see.
One does not outweigh the other. Social emotional learning is just as important as academics. You can't, we, we've learned you can't have one without the other. They're both, they're both of people important. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I'd like to ask the board's agreement that we can put the superintendent's search update as a next on the agenda?
He's, he's waited longer.
That's all right.
I spoke, I spoke with Dick earlier. He said he's anxious to hear about social emotional.
That was very interesting. I hope it becomes the legacy of the staff. And by that I mean something that stays long after you're gone. Because so many times in education, we go through these things and we build them up and then they don't. And I look back over many, many years and think, I mean, there were some good things we did. Why didn't we keep that going? And, and I sure hope this keeps going. The hat's off to you. You're doing a great job with it.
Yeah, and what we did before wasn't bad.
No, what we do, but the things that work best were the things that we see reflected in that.
Sure, yeah.
Nice job, ladies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, um, we're working on the brochure, which is done. I just noticed a few things that I have to touch on. But we, the part there where it was the, um, the history, remember it went way back. We changed that to about our district. And, uh, so that's done. Attached to that also is the application. And, uh, that is online and they can actually fill that out online, but it still needs to be printed out and submitted uh, as a paper copy. Uh, we've begun advertising. Uh, you'll see an advertisement in your NISBA, uh, newspaper that comes out soon. Uh, the School Administrator Association of New York State, which is actually, uh, they contract with a company that does all that for them. So the same company that does the posting for Sanes will do it for many organizations. Then it, it kind of creates a web of, of postings that gets us a lot of exposure. So the School Administrator Association, the State Council of School Superintendents, uh, the New York State Association of School Personnel Administrators and OLS, which, uh, uh, is the BOSI's wide, uh, advertising and job search, uh, program that pretty much the whole state is using. Uh, there, there's some additional options out there, but I think for the most part, we've done more than what most district superintendents do as far as getting worded out. Um, by the time I meet with you again, I'm hoping that I'll, I'll be having a little, uh, interest. Um, the brochure is be printed. Uh, I will be taking it to several area district superintendents. I have a meeting with Anita Murphy on the 29th. Uh, I'm going to be meeting with Nick Saban of ONC BOSI's and, uh, the other ones in this area. And then Anita will help me distribute that to the other district superintendents across the state. So that's, that's where we are. Uh, it's rolling and we just got to keep our fingers crossed that the right people will see it and will have a good candidate pool. Questions?
I just have one request. Could you just talk a little bit about some of the personnel outreach you're doing in terms of increasing the possibility of having more applied candidates?
Um, one of the things I'll be talking about with the district superintendents is do they have, for example, a principal's organization? I know HFM, BOSI's, I don't know if they still do, but there was a time when all the principals met. And if that's the case, perhaps I could get five minutes, fifteen minutes of their meeting time just to take the brochures and say if you're interested. Also, I'm asking the district superintendents, who is out there? Who's ready? For example, Nick Saban down at ONC BOSI's. Chris, you know that of the nineteen districts in BOSI's, sixteen of them are under 500 students. And that's pretty much an element, uh, entry level position. So are there superintendents who are, are looking to make a step maybe to the next larger district? And they've got the experience and they're good. Uh, I know of other principals I've heard of, uh, that are doing really, really well. They're well-liked by and respected by their staff and their boards and I will be reaching out to them. Uh, some of this will be travel in the month of December. If I don't hear from these people, and as we're getting more and more desperate maybe. But, uh, hopefully that outreach will produce, uh, a quality in the candidate pool that we might not see otherwise.
Any other questions? All right, thanks very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda then is the student representative.
I'm working too confused, so thanks Olivia for your patience.
Um, so this was a recommendation brought to my attention. I don't know if it's possible, but students arrive to school pretty early as we know. And I'm pretty sure breakfast begins at seven thirty. And people were wondering if it could maybe start a little bit earlier so that they could eat when they get to school. I thought that would take like staff or something like that, but they were just wondering if it was possible.
If you don't mind, but if there is a response, let us do it as we.
So thank you for that because I talked to Mrs. Dallin Brody who was in the district yesterday, or Monday, that was yesterday. So she needs to just check with the high school cafeteria staff to make sure that we can push it back a little bit. We believe we can. But she needs to do that check first. She will let me know tomorrow and then I'll let this person in the student body know that we can move it back a little bit. If more kids want to eat breakfast by starting earlier, we're in it.
Okay.
We just have to figure out what that time could be. Okay, so thank you for that.
Um, the second recommendation was, this was an incident where a student was left at the school. They missed their bus or something and that happens pretty often. But, um, the school bus that should have had the child on it sat in a parking lot for about twenty minutes. And the students on it were angry about that. So they were just wondering if like communication between the bus drivers could improve so that something could have happened more efficiently to get that child on the bus.
That's it. Certainly, as high schoolers, I can understand that. For everyone, I have copies of our transportation handbook since, um, since this is this year. Since some of you don't have children in school anymore, you may not receive this transportation handbook. But I think it's a great opportunity, Olivia, to maybe provide some, um, so just some information about how we make sure that all of our students are home safely. So this was a one-of incident, one-of. And while this may seem like as an inconvenience to some high school students, it is not an inconvenience to the parents of our, our youngest students. So, um, we are most likely to have confusing situations occur during the beginning of the school year and that's when this one happened. While I, I, I can't speak to the singular incident that's referenced here. I think I know what it is, but I, I'm not sure. Um, I would like to share how our transportation department and bus drivers work every day to help keep our students safe. So the transportation handbook has information in it. Did I pass around enough so you got one? Okay. Um, so sometimes we need to verify where students are supposed to be or go at the end of the day. So this is typically addressed by the school offices through procedures written in the transportation handbook. However, as with our little ones, sometimes it gets a little crazy. And that's, I believe, what happened in this situation. We may need to confirm with the family or with transportation how a student will be transported home safely. What, um, I think what students don't see is what goes on in the background between how the drivers are working with the school offices, particularly East Hill, to make sure that someone is there. If you're in K one, K or one, we require that someone is there. If a student gets left behind and nobody's answering the phone at home, we have to figure all that out. So absolutely, I understand why that might be frustrating for high school students, but I'm hoping that they'll, they'll maybe show a little patience when indeed something happens that we're trying to address. And I believe it was a one-of, but I'm assuming and putting together some pieces. I'm not sure that that's the direct situation that your colleagues, your classmates are talking about. So, but I do know of one.
Yeah, I don't know the specifics of it.
Right, that's why I mean, so that's why I thought, well, we'll just talk generally about what we do. A whole lot of communication on radios and communication with the staff, but it, it usually happens with our little friends. So thank you though for letting us know.
So, well, just because we went there, um, so are buses supposed to wait for students that we know are in school still?
Well, I'm not sure about, it's hard to say because I don't know the particulars and I, I'm assuming and I could be very wrong.
No, I'm, I'm not saying this situation. I'm just saying, because I read through this and I didn't see anything on that particular topic.
Right.
I meant from a process perspective.
From a process perspective, sometimes we will wait to, to see if we're going to go circle back around and pick up a student, if we can reach someone at the fam, at the home. So if it's quicker to just go back around, we will do that. Sometimes we will, drivers will finish a run and go back and pick up a student and take them home if that happens. It doesn't happen very often, but that, there's a couple of different ways we will do that. Sometimes the student will stay with, um, either the school office or, um, with the, with Mr. Combyr until someone can come pick them up. So it just really depends on the situation. And so I'm making assertions and assumptions about something I think happened.
Yeah, I'm not talking about these, but I just wanted to know.
Right, but that's how we'll do it. There's a lot of different ways. What happens is the communication happens between, it's typically been East Hill. I mean, I would say most of the times.
Is it the bus driver to the school administration?
Yeah, it's the bus driver to the school. Sometimes it's Mr. Combyr, the bus driver of the school. And we have someone on staff at the school who handles that well into the afternoon. It just depends.
Yep.
Does it have the times that the students are released from each of the schools?
That's part of the general, that's not in here. On a separate cover, we release the, um, the bus routes, which have estimated both pickup and drop-off times. However, sometimes there's always a little flexibility in there. So we know that if something happens, you know, sometimes the buses don't come up here like right at three because we're addressing an issue that happens where two-thirds of the district are loading buses. So we just try to work with that and keep people in the loop, communication as best we can.
That, that was my question. I was just curious as to what times they're getting on the buses at the schools at the end of the day.
Yeah, so it's around.
Typically, they say we're ready to roll at two forty-two when they come from the bus garage. We are often out there by two forty-four. And so sometimes if the buses are waiting, you know, the kids have been on the bus since at least two forty-five to three oh five when the high school gets on and the child, you know, a little kid's only ridden down the road and up. And actually, the bus drivers often tell me that in the discipline world, that most of our behavior problems happen in nap time. Because once they get out on the road and get going, it's, they either nap or they get lulled. It's, you know, more like traveling in a car. So we try to pull out. We were awful today, I know. When Chris does this, it's two fifty-five, two fifty-seven is when we pull out. So that is going.
Okay, and middle school kids are getting off the bus. They're staying like that.
Middle schoolers, the bus bell from middle school rings at two fifty and we aim that, that the buses are pulling out at two fifty-five. So we have about a five minute from, um, end of the day home base to the bus, buses leaving window. But they have time before that to go to their lockers to get their things. So it's truly their pack, they're ready to go at two fifty to get on the bus with hopes of being, uh, departing at two fifty.
Okay, and then they come around to the high school.
Yeah, they come up.
And we leave the high school around three oh five.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Um, over hearing what students have been saying, the availability has already gotten better. And I think it helps that we have like set nights, like tomorrow is something for financial aid. So that helps because it's scheduled for the families too. So things are going good with the system. And, um, I just wanted to let you all know, you heard it from the presentation, but the STAR activity, all the high schoolers went to the elementary, middle school and taught about bullying and kindness. And I just thought that was really nice and I thought we should go back.
So just to follow up on that, the STAR committee is gathering feedback from across the district. So we'll report on that in a future meeting on what the feedback is. So, um, we'll be reporting back on that as well.
I'd just like to say that I, I did go to three classrooms in middle school for this activity and it was very impressive. And also very different in each classroom. And I definitely have some feedback that I will share with you as well.
I'm proud of those high school students. They only, we only met once, forty minutes.
Yes.
To figure out, divide up, show them the video, what they needed to do. They had no props, no nothing with them prior to them walking into those classrooms.
Some of them felt so, uh, one student, big football guy, he's like, I led that, I led it. And we took a, we even took a field trip. I'm like, where'd you go? Into the hallway. So it was one fold for both. And I, oh, I, I do, I do want to share that a random eighth grader came to my door Monday morning and said, I had such a great time. I don't know who this boy was. I had such a great time Friday. That was so fun. I said, really? I said, you, you'd like to do that again? He says, yeah, definitely. And he says, well, and I'll be a freshman next year. I said, then you'll be able to be involved in it. So he was psyched about that. It was good.
Thank you guys for, for all the, okay, is that it then?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, the next thing is the board actions and goals update. Mrs. Crimshaw.
Well, it's all out there. Um, would you like me to go through each one or just answer questions?
Um, what is, what's your?
I am ready.
Go ahead, you go first.
Okay. So the first question I had was on a threat assessment team. And I wanted to know if there were any parents involved in that?
I can answer that question. Um, there aren't at this time because the idea of a threat assessment team is to actually assess what could be viable threats and take action within this confined safety plan. So most threat assessment teams are internal teams that function to address issues that might come up.
I just log with our safety incidents that we've been through for the last two years. It might be a really good idea. And I'm looking at this just because what the community's already experienced. Follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. We have our parents on our building safety committees. I wonder if the threat committee could make a presentation to our building safety committees. That would be a good idea.
Oh, that would be fine. I'm just wanting to make sure we make that connection.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I think, I think the problem of having the parents on a threat assessment team is that they're, they're going to be dealing with individual students.
Well, they are deadline.
And, you know, the confidentiality thing could become a problem if the parent on the team as opposed to just to enjoy this work. I think I just, this is.
But I think our process, and I, and I agree with Mark, because I think our process could be, if we were to bring them to the building levels, that we do, we have people that are already thinking in terms of regards to safety across their building. And then to create, okay, this is going to be our procedure and our, our, our process after if there were to be like a threat. Where do you see?
Yeah, that, that's what I'm looking for is to make sure the parents have input into whatever you're doing for the threat.
Sure, sure.
Um, I'm curious as to what, with the threat assessment, I guess I'm most confused as to, I'm confused. What does the threat, the threat assessment, what is it doing?
So when we're looking at a threat assessment, well, I, let's, let's go over there. I was confused too. So I was like, well, what would dictate a threat? So I did a lot of research on this. And we're really talking about if a student is threatening to harm someone else.
Okay.
You know, themselves even. Okay, so we might go down the line if, if there is a suicidal, um, threat. Or is it like, I'm going to punch blah, blah, blah in the nose and, you know, or, you know, I'm planning a, a big record. Okay, so, so really, um, we've been, I've been doing a lot of research. We do Virginia model. Um, there's some other agencies that have done a lot of work. Um, there's some other agencies that have done a lot of work. And Officer Cruz went to a threat assessment on the uh, terms for like school resources with that, with that lens. And so we've compiled all this information. We're kind of developing a process to help us go through that. So what do we do if it's one of those, I'm going to punch you in the nose or um, suicidal threat? Or what do you do if it is a larger instance, okay, so a larger?
So are you only focusing on internal, bubbling from the internal?
What you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, but like within our.
From inside the school, in front of our student base, that's a better way to say it.
Yes, yes, that is the purpose.
That's, that's, that's what I, that's what I was wanting to clarify. That we're talking about, you guys are coming together as a, as a, for lack of a better term, because isn't what I know, like PPS team. And coming together and.
Evaluating.
Evaluating and talking about the particular students or, or individuals who, you know, who are involved in our school.
So when, when you say like, so I guess when I think when you say what's happening in the building of, it obviously a student makes a statement within the building, yes. But it also goes into what's happening in some regards, like you know, social media. I mean, that's present everywhere. So what if that comes up? How do we address those type of situations?
But you're looking at it from a student generated perspective.
And I'd just like to say, especially for your benefit, because you were here, you know, um, this came up in, in our considerations around safety. And one of the things that seemed clear, um, at least from the reading I did, and I think we had discussions about it when we read, is that a threat assessment team was one of the most effective things that a school district could do to help prevent the, the occurrence of any violent incidents at the school. And um, that's why we decided to implement that. One of the things I would like to encourage, if we haven't planned it already, and it'll, it'll maybe be some more discussion. But I, I think it would be great to have some real, you know, professional development around this issue because um, there's been a lot of groundwork done on it. And um, there's a lot of places where, you know, they have people who can really get us up to, up to speed in it.
Right. I've reached out to several um, places where there, um, I'm trying to partner with neighboring schools to save because they think they're quite pricey, um, for people in for that. Um, so we're, we're working on that. But what I found was cool is um, there, there's so much out there um, in terms of just basic information, you know, from the federal government, from you know, like agencies with then adaptive programs and made their own. Um, but really what it comes down to and what we're finding is that we don't have a set procedure, but we're doing these things. So there is an issue, like we were talking about a threat assessment team versus our PPS. And we're like, once we get going, we have a process, there, in some regards, we're seeing a lot of crossover because we're dealing with situations far before they turn into something larger and they can kind of have a pulse. And so you know, how do we bring in Officer Cruz? Because he has a different take on things. And how does he um, notify us if he sees something? How do other teachers notify um, us or students? And I think that's one of our big, I would say holes, but how do we make a procedure around if a student hears something, how do they let us know? And so it would've been interesting to see what our neighboring schools have done, like one made a simple form, like, like hey, there's an issue, you know, here you go. Um, we asked about feedback and how they were, if they were getting stuff and we, it was kind of vague, the feedback that we got. So we're exploring that a little bit more. But like, how do we get people to share within the moment too? Because you know, we get caught up, you know, we're teaching this and it's like, okay, I, I have a break in two periods. But no, we need to know if it's something truly intense, we need to know immediately. So how do we do that? How do we, how do we make that happen? But I was impressed when I looking over the research or um, and the articles and then seeing, and then we plotted out like, okay, what are we doing already? Like what is our procedure? And we're like, we're there, we're just not cohesive there. But we have the pieces, we just got to put them together.
So where is the external view coming from? Are you leading that to each building?
Would you, oh, like in terms of threats like?
Correct.
People not within our campus?
Correct, like somebody from not within our campus enters our campus.
Well, that comes down to, that comes down to our building's level safety. So what happens, and that comes, you know, when we have our, and it sounds like I had the Raptor thing on. But like, how are they getting in? Who's giving access to that, that person coming in? Those types of things, there, there are building level safety plans and there are confidential plans for the buildings on how to handle those. External could be weather related, could be hazardous waste related.
And I guess what I'm, what I'm interested in is, do we have some commonality across, if I just take an unwanted person being in the building?
Yeah.
Do we have commonality across the buildings or is each building doing their own thing here?
So that's what, no, and that's where we are sitting when it comes to building levels. And there's, so I'm supposed to sit on both of those. Um, and when we, we've talked about it in terms of, you know, even if it's an officer that walks in the building, how does each building handle that? You know, like, and I think that's been happening and starting from the administrative level to make sure that we're covering that, you know, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question about um, the high school building leadership team.
Uh huh.
That, that update on that.
Uh huh.
And um, it looks like we're doing some additional professional development on the restorative practices, which is, I'm guessing based on what you saw earlier, is kind of like a buildup from the elementary into the middle school and high school?
It's, well, the middle school has, is kind of doing its, has its own process going right now between middle school two point O and conscious discipline. The high school building leadership team, what met on the twelfth, they are looking at how to start to provide some awareness of restorative practices to the whole faculty. So that team is driving that. We did have um, some funds from an earlier grant that the high school received. So we were, um, I had suggested and offered to the high school team that they might want to consider that um, for perhaps a small book study for people. So they, um, the team is going to take the lead on helping the staff develop awareness. And then from there will be the next step, what might be appropriate, what isn't appropriate. The staff will help determine that.
Okay.
And they're looking for their November, hopefully for their November faculty meeting to have someone come just do like an over, an overview of restorative practices in the big picture.
So, okay, so that's what I was going to ask. Do you have somebody coming in um, to the whole faculty and saying, hey, these are the ideas behind it?
Yeah.
Um, see what you think and discuss it and decide if this is an avenue you want to pursue.
And how this works or how this doesn't work, right.
Okay.
And just to let the board members know, I mean, we will receive copies of this book.
Yes, right, yeah. When we did the, um, we had a debrief session following our October professional development day with our presenters who presented on trauma in the schools and trauma sensitive classrooms. And one of their suggestions, one strategy they found very useful was to provide faculty and staff an opportunity to do a book study with a small stipend attached to it because it's worth people's time. We also discussed how to make it both an in-person, but also an online or another way to use technology because you, people may have other commitments, so you don't want them to not participate. So we want to have multiple avenues for people to participate in this small book study. But again, it's around the general topics of restorative practices, which falls under the social emotional learning umbrella. So prior to that training on the professional development day, all the staff received a copy of the SEL framework and the SEL benchmark standards.
And will it be open to every staff member?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the point, the point.
That, that's what, that's what I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
That every staff member who wishes to participate can.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Ms. Mills?
On a different topic, um, my other question was on the area engagement. And it was the survey.
Yes.
And I, I understand that this is being driven by the elementary, which I think is appropriate. But I was wondering if there were other places we should be administering that from a parent involvement perspective besides elementary.
Oh, no, the, the form went out to the whole district.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't read it that way.
Yeah, it went out to the school staff, but Ms. Ward is just coordinating the effort of collecting the responses and help develop the form. It went out to everybody. We do have um, responses from across the dis, six, yes, we keep, but it, we have responses from across the district.
So, all right, then I really misunderstood. So we only sent, we only, we only asked, the survey was administered to staff not to?
I think it was, at, at this point, our, we're just looking to see if people in the faculty and faculty group are going to be interested in having a tiered class.
Okay.
That's where we are right now.
All right, I totally missed, I thought this was.
No, we're not out.
Oh, yeah, no, this is not, oh, yeah, no, this is not recruiting yet. This is just for input on how they could be one of the staff volunteer in their classes.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Scott Shaw.
Yeah.
Okay, then we have um, the capital project update. All right.
Please.
Um, so we, we've met and interviewed two construction management outfits. Um, they are both going to be submitting proposals to us in terms of what they will perform, how much it would cost and so forth. Um, the building grounds committing will be having another meeting with Gary May and the Stream Show as well to um, go over those proposals once we receive them. And then make a recommendation to the board to, to use one or the other, um, and to consider that on a, on a, on a, on a. Both of them seem, you know, very good on, basically, I think a lot of, the main thing that we're really concerned with is not only to have oversight on this, on this capital project and, and to pick the best group to do that, but also to do, to get in a group that minimizes the amount of time and effort that Gary May has to be involved with it. So that he, this is, he's got a full time job and, and so that's one of our concerns. And um, but I, I think that between the two, I think we would definitely have a competent and, and good, you know, choice.
Do the, the engineers, I guess, for like, the people that we've already been dealing with, do they have working relationships with both of them?
Yes, the architect, SEI has worked with both of them. And um, you know, they will definitely be working there.
One other, one other piece is we, uh, SEI has submitted the responses to all of the questions that came back from SED's review of the plans that were submitted. That always happens, it's part of the process. So they have, they have submitted their written responses to the reviewer on all the questions. There weren't that many, but on the questions that they had. So those are all in. So we're still, we're now still in the pipeline.
And we're still looking at, hopefully beginning to do things in the, in the spring. And with obviously the bulk of the work to be done next summer. Is there else on that?
The only thing that I would say is a reminder that as we get to that point, we need to make sure we address security work.
Yeah.
People that will have to be there.
That was a dr, we asked that question, it was addressed by both of the outfits. And I think there will be a very conscious and, and effective way to do that.
They did both suggest they would follow whatever our district procedures already are for folks in the building.
And as well as even things like um, putting up a, a barrier between the place they're working in and the rest of the school. So that there would be minimal, where possible, obviously, but, or where, where minimize contact between the construction crews and our student population. But you know, we'll, we'll get a concrete proposal from each of them in the next couple of weeks and look at it and have a building grounds meeting prior to that court meeting.
Yeah.
And know for you.
I think it would be good to look at our safety process and see what it would mean for them to comply with that. Just because they're going to be in our buildings and you probably want to know if they are.
Yeah. Well, at the very least, they'd all run through Raptor.
Exactly.
At the very least.
And we even discussed things like, you know, doors won't be propped open and you know.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's perfect.
I mean, they'll have to follow our, our rules.
Right.
Okay, so uh, the next point on the agenda is old business. You didn't get, get that information, did you?
She did.
It's in, yeah.
And I just put it up today. That's okay, I, she just got it, but we is prepared to share the information with you.
The veterans exemption that we adopted last year resulted in four point three million dollars worth of exempt property, which was a total of three hundred and twenty-eight parcels. And that equaled about eighty-six thousand dollars um, in tax revenue that was shifted to other taxpayers through the exemption.
Is that only out of the school tax portion? So that's eighty-six thousand out of twenty-two point seven million?
Seven million.
Six million, something.
Seven million.
Seven point one million. It's a tax.
Oh, right.
Yeah, that was a tax.
Thank you.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then the second part is the new exemption that there's, like the Cold War exemption. Um, and I got information from the county on that. They gave me a list of properties and it's thirty-three parcels, um, equalling about three hundred and forty thousand dollars, which would, which the tax on that amount is six, less than seven thousand dollars in taxes that would be shifted to other people, other taxpayers. And that was right from the county.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just to remind us, is, is this a total tax exemption or a reduction in the tax that they have to pay?
It's a re, well, they gave me the amounts that would be, like, it's all different. I have the list, some.
Right, no, no, I just meant the program. I can't remember when we first talked about it. It's not a total, you know.
It's a reduction in the assessment.
Yeah, it's a reduction in the assessment value.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, most of the people for the Cold War, the maximum amount is twelve thousand would be exempt. If we get this Cold War.
Twelve thousand of that.
There is some. Set value.
Yeah.
But some of them are different for some reason.
Yeah.
So my question is, do we want to, is there any discussion? If we want to submit a motion, put it down.
I would make the motion that we adopt both of the, both of the other outstanding ones, the Cold War exemption and the eligible funds beds.
A second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, we need a resolution.
We would need an actual resolution right now, so we can get that for now.
Yeah.
All right, so let's put, let's put that on the November, first, we need a November.
There's a formal resolution like we did before, without Mrs. Van Huse in here to all fuss with that. We'll write, we'll get it written up for what, on the November.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure that we have the figures in there.
Yeah. I had read them, so I knew the figures, I was like, okay, this is.
Okay, um.
Good.
So I'd like the motion to recess into executive session. Motion.
Second.
For favor, for favor, recess.